Evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Harrisburg City Council hosted an executive session prior to our legislative session this evening. We'll begin with our Legislative Caucus and then we will formally begin our legislative session. So I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Majors, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. For communications, we are joined by President of the Harrisburg Young Professionals, who will share a presentation celebrating their 25th anniversary. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes. Council members, this would be the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. Then, we will receive reports of committees. The first report, I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of November 1st, 2023. Then, Vice President Green, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, will share a report on the work session of November 1st, 2023. And the final report you will hear this evening will come from Chair Rodriguez, our Public Safety Committee Chair on the work session of November 1st, 2023. We have one ordinance for first reading, that's Bill 8 of 2023. We have one ordinance for amendment, Bill 7 of 2023. And then ordinances for final passage, Bill 7 of 2023, which we will vote upon. Moving to resolutions, Resolution 75 of 2023. We will need to suspend the rules for discussion on this one, but ultimately, we will vote on it. Resolution 76 of 2023, we will vote upon. Resolution 77 of 2023 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 78 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 79 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 80 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business, councilmembers? Okay, any new business?
I just had a few things to say about events this weekend.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:17 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Please note that Harrisburg City Council did host an executive session prior to the start of our legislative session. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present. Please note, Councilwoman Daniels may be running a little late, so hopefully she'll be joining us before we adjourn. The invocation will be led by Councilman Majors. Councilman Majors?
Thank you, President Bowers. Just as that, as we're entering into the holiday season, for a moment of silence for our community, as we know many are going through very difficult times, and we just want to just have a moment of silence for all of those in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please rise. Thank you. Just like to note for the record that Councilwoman Daniels has joined us. For communications, we're joined by the President of the Harrisburg Young Professionals, who will share a presentation celebrating their 25th anniversary.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, esteemed councilmembers, residents of Harrisburg, and those who have joined us online. My name is Olivia Edwards-Rheinfuss, and I have the honor and privilege of being here today on behalf of Harrisburg Young Professionals, belovedly called HYP. Tonight, I submit remarks on behalf of 3,500 athletes, 500 members, and thousands of alumni and network supporters who appreciate and love this city, just as you do. HYP was founded in 1998 by five young professionals who sought to revitalize the city through the power of youthful ingenuity and connection. 25 years ago, Harrisburg, we understood was struggling to retain working-age young people as they moved in droves to nearby cities and metropolitan areas. Our founders acted on the simple and yet bold mission to attract and retain young professionals who grew up here, but also those who could come and give their time and talents to the city, while making Harrisburg a better place to live, work, and play. They formed Harrisburg Young Professionals in order to recruit and retain young professionals towards achieving that same vision. At the time, only 1 in 9 residents was between the ages of 20 and 40 years old. Today, we are proud to say 1 in 5 residents of Harrisburg is between that same age range, and many of which are surpassing national averages in working and giving back philanthropically to their city. We are grateful to City Council and many mayoral administrations for inviting young professionals to the table. Together, we have supported a shared goal: to experience Harrisburg as a vibrant community with thriving cultural and economic scenes, and create a supportive place to plant roots and raise a family. Today, Harrisburg is consistently ranked in the top 10 markets for young professionals nationwide, due in large part to your partnership and support of what young people come to the table and ask for. HYP is honored to play a role in celebrating all that Harrisburg has to offer through events, sports leagues, service, and much more. One of my personal favorite stories I've heard over this year as we celebrate 25 years of service was the initiative to recruit small business owners to start their dream here throughout the city. And in fact, in the early 2000s, HYP took on a large role in the discussions surrounding Restaurant Row. Since its creation, HYP has also given back to Restaurant Row by drawing in crowds to discover exciting and delectable opportunities along that corridor. But this year, I've been able to take part in developing portions of Harrisburg's thriving arts, soon-to-be Arts District. We were fortunate to be able to partner with Sprocket Mural Works and create a vibrant community mural on the corner of Cumberland and 3rd Street. And we will continue to give back to both corridors and extended corridors in the coming years. Later, in the early 2000s, we launched sports leagues to showcase the greenways, byways, and beautiful fields throughout the city. Today, our 11 leagues support many small business partners as we encourage our athletes to patronize local hotspots. HYP is not all fun and games. We recognize our community needs our support. Our members learn about philanthropy, the history of the city, and work with dozens of local nonprofits to make lasting impacts into their missional work. Each year, we donate over 2,000 hours of service to these organizations and instill long-term commitment to serving alongside them throughout their careers and lives in Harrisburg. We also partner with the city to beautify Forester Street, one of our premier and traversed entrances to the city. We also encourage our members to live in the city of Harrisburg. We showcase neighborhoods throughout our annual home tour program and raise funds for first-time homebuyers. To date, we have granted nearly $80,000 to first-time homebuyers, and those are all to first-time residents in the city of Harrisburg. Excuse me, first-time homebuyers in the city of Harrisburg. Over the past 25 years, our organization has grown and evolved in ways we could never have imagined. We have witnessed countless success stories where young professionals have flourished in their careers, formed lifelong friendships, and made a positive impact on our beloved city. We have built bridges, fostered collaboration, and created opportunities for growth and advancement. This work would not be possible without our dedicated leaders, volunteers, and partners, similar to our dearly, excuse me, our esteemed councilmembers. They are the driving force behind our volunteer-led organization and certainly have achieved many of our accomplishments. It is their unwavering commitment, passion, and hard work that has propelled us forward and shaped the organization into what it is today. In the spirit of celebration, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge our countless professional development workshops that we want to extend beyond the scope of our members, but to the growing community here in Harrisburg. It's one of our premier goals as to we create a more equitable and accessible programming slate for the community. Lastly, I just want to offer in the commemoration of this milestone, as we look to the future, we know our journey is far from over. There's much work to be done. We invite the council to participate with our members, and we'll certainly invite them to participate here as a core part of our mission is to be civically engaged. I am confident that HYP has the strength, resilience, and vision to continue making a profound impact. And in conclusion, I extend my heartfelt gratitude to many of you who have mentored countless young professionals in the city over the years and for your commitment to making the city a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you for taking the time to represent the young professionals in our membership and stand for the voices of many young people in the city who look forward to its vibrant future. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I do have a proclamation for you in recognition of the 25th anniversary. So if you wouldn't mind, please indulge me for a moment. Proclamation. Whereas the city of Harrisburg applauds the Harrisburg Young Professionals for their dedicated service to the city of Harrisburg for 25 years. And whereas the Harrisburg Young Professionals were founded in the spring of 1998 by five friends who recognized the need for young professional men and women to come together and take action in the city of Harrisburg to encourage growth. And whereas the Harrisburg Young Professionals carry out their mission to serve as a catalyst in making Harrisburg a better place to live, work, and play while developing and retaining future leaders. And whereas the Harrisburg Young Professionals are led by a Board of Directors, all of whom are age 40 or younger. The Board consists of a President, two Vice Presidents, Secretary, and Treasurer. There are nine standing committees, one partnership committee, and three administrative committees. And whereas the Harrisburg Young Professionals host a series of signature events, including the Italian Lake Concert Series, How It's Built in the Berg Series, an annual home tour, home buying seminars, economic development forums, the annual Foster Street Cleanup, 20 in Their Twenties Awards Nights, Puppies and Pints, Running Club, Toastmasters, group hiking, outdoor fitness, sports leagues. And whereas the Harrisburg Young Professionals has grown over the past 25 years and continues to flourish while achieving their mission to develop future leaders. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends the Harrisburg Young Professionals for their dedication to making Harrisburg a better place to live, work, and play. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful 25th anniversary year. Signed and attested in the city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to take a picture with all of us with the proclamation. Thank you. Thank you.
I got her, I got her. I got it. She came right in, too.
Thank you, everyone. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Testing. There we go. Okay. Hi, Amber Blalock from the New Fox Ridge neighborhood. You may know me from previous City Council meetings talking about cycling. As the weather grows colder, it's not like you can't cycle in the winter. There is this new adventure called coats. But I certainly can't deny that as the days grow darker and colder, there's always the increasing temptation to hop, not on a bike, but inside that nice warm bus going down the street. Unfortunately, that bus is only too rarely going where you actually need to go, at the times you need to go, and the frequencies that you needed to go. And hopping that bus would involve spending quite a while waiting in a bus stop, which may not even have such basic things as a place to sit or shelter from inclement weather. I know that the Harrisburg Public Transit System does not have the best reputation. I know that I have been trying to use it and very, in fact, never once actually succeeded in managing to get a public transit route that works for my needs. But there are a number of people who do use the public transit in Harrisburg. And I think there's us all remembering that public transit is not a charity, and it's honestly not really a business either. It's an investment in our community to make it more connected, more accessible to everyone. And I know that our transit system is not going to become New York City's subway system overnight. But I do really think that I want to challenge this council that I know that we have people from Harrisburg City who have been appointed to serve on the SRTA board. I would really like to challenge them to take public transit regularly on weekends, on weeknights, during weekdays, to get to places they need to go and have that experience in order to know how to make public transit better. I would also really like to see an effort to help improve the quality of bus stops, to make sure they have better lighting, to make sure they just have benches, if nothing else. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street, B, Harrisburg, PA. And I agree, we need more public transit service here in Harrisburg. On, sp- one example is here on North Second Street. There's no bus service, and taxis are not reliable, from my experience. Thank God, my landlady gave me a utility cart to use, to carry my bags to the laundry once a week, so I can walk there. Oh, okay, but I still, I still ask for regular local city bus service on North Second Street, at least as far north as Division Street, with buses running at least every half hour, all day and in the evening. Also, also, we need more Amtrak passenger trains running on the rails here in Pennsylvania and all over the United States. I ride the Amtrak passenger trains almost every summer. And I, I went on beautiful, excellent rides on the Amtrak trains. This summer, I rode the, after I rode the Keystone, 550 Keystone train from Harrisburg to Philadelphia in the morning, then I rode the Amtrak Cardinal passenger train from Philadelphia all the way to Chicago, and going on that beautiful Virginia route. And, and again, I had a beautiful, excellent ride on the Amtrak trains. And then, coming back from Chicago, I rode the direct train route from Chic- Chicago to Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh to Harrisburg. Beautiful, fantastic. This is, this is what, th- uh, this is one of my top favorite rail trips. And, and I'm ready, I'm re- I look forward, I look forward to my next Amtrak train trip this next summer, in June or July, God willing. And one other issue I want to tell you quickly, we need more for pedestrians crossing the streets. We need more police enforcement enforcing the pedestrian walk signs at all the intersections. Again, more police enforcements, crackdown on drivers who don't stop for pedestrians when the walk signs are on. And, and again, oh, and one more thing. I propose no bicycling allowed on the sidewalks. Sidewalk, sidewalks should be strictly for pedestrians. And again, no bicycling on sidewalks. Okay, and that, that, that is it for what I have to say. And I, again, I agree with this young lady here. We, we need, we need more public transit, at least regular bus service on the streets, on North, North Second Street, and other, other streets in, in Har- in Harrisburg and nearby towns. Okay, thank you much. God bless.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, honorable members of City Council. My name is Mo Man Bate. A resident here at Hoffman Street, right here in Harrisburg. I'm proud to be a part of this beautiful city where people of different faiths and backgrounds live in harmony. In our uptown neighborhood, we have Jewish, Muslim, Christian, and people of various faiths, and people of no faith, living as neighbors. Several diverse places of worship are also within walking distance of each other. It's one of the many things that I love about our great city. I come before you tonight with deep anxiety and concern about what's happening across the world. I strongly condemn the recent horrific acts by Hamas killing over 1,000 innocent people in Israel. Their actions are not in line with the true teachings of Islam. To my Israeli and Jewish neighbors, I extend my condolences and sympathies. I also strongly condemn the disproportionate actions that have taken place since October 7. Indiscriminate bombings and attacks by the Israeli government have killed several thousand innocent people, while also committing other human rights violations like cutting off essential services and preventing aid. If we rightfully consider ordinary citizens in Israel innocent, we, it should also be the same for Palestinians. Most Palestinians have no ties to extremists and want the same peace, security, and opportunity as their neighbors. I extend my condolences and sympathies to my Palestinian and Muslim neighbors as well. Beyond this horrific situation, I'm deeply troubled by two additional things. First, the immense hatred in our world today, which allows these attacks to happen. When people stop seeing each other as human beings and view others' lives as not as precious as their own, it leads to situations like these, where innocent lives are lost. I'm very concerned about antisemitism, Islamophobia, and all other forms of hatred festering in the world today. Second, the support and escalation of this hatred and the killing of innocent people through the divisive rhetoric and funding by global powers. Disturbingly, their motivations seem to be financial and political interests, not valuing the sacredness of the lives affected. Neither of these things leads to peace. I pray that major world powers work towards justice on both sides of this conflict and work, actually work, towards lasting peace. A ceasefire is necessary to prevent further catastrophic loss of life. I, I subscribe to the motto of the Ahmadiya Muslim community, love for all, hatred for none. And I've participated in and helped organize several interfaith activities, outreach efforts, community-building activities right here in our great city, fostering understanding and friendship among the various communities in Harrisburg. Harrisburg is a shining example of diversity and unity. We need to remain together as a community, united for peace. It is our shared responsibility to engage in dialogues and support initiatives that promote understanding and reconciliation among all communities. In closing, I would like to invite the City Council and the Harrisburg community to an event at Hadid Mosque at 245 Division Street called Voices for Peace. This event will take place on Thursday, November 16th, at 6:00 PM. Your presence would be greatly appreciated. If there are any ques- if there are any questions, please feel free to reach out, and I have a flyer that I can submit as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes. This would be the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on November 1st, 2023. Council members, are there any revisions, questions, or comments related to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on November 1st, 2023. On Wednesday, November 1st, 2023, the Administration Committee met to discuss one bill, Bill 7 of 2023, which is an ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to authorize the mayor and the city controller to provide joint-written designations for limited-purpose digital signatories to execute agreements and related documents on behalf of the city of Harrisburg when a sole digital signor is needed, or, excuse me, is mandated. Mr. Neil Grover, City Solicitor, was present on behalf of the Administration. Solicitor Grover shared that the bill was a recommendation that came out of the Law Bureau. He shared that digital signatures have been lawful since 1999. The bill reflects what PennDOT has authorized statutory signers as model language. Council members asked the following questions. When will the bill take effect? Is there a checks and balances function? Is our technology updated or holding us back? Solicitor Grover noted that the effective date is 20 days after the bill is signed into law by the mayor. The current law is holding us back, not our technology. I recommend my colleagues support Bill 7 of 2023 as it meets a need we've seen repeatedly over the past two years. The bill would assist in improving internal processes. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be shared by Vice President, who serves as the Chair of our Budget and Finance Committee on the work session that occurred on November 1st, 2023. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of November 1st, 2023, the Budget and Finance Committee met to discuss Resolution 75 of 2023 approving the fifth proposed 2023 budget reallocation. Some of the items discussed include an increase in funding in the line item for the Bureau of Police Overtime Budget, an increase in the line item for medical expenses to cover unexpected, unexpected, excuse me, medical claims, additional operating funds for the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, an increase in budget line to support the electric bill payment for the city traffic lights, a proposed transfer to accommodate two new tr- uh, two new recycling trucks, an adjustment to accommodate a new equipment dome for the facility for the Public Works Department due to the I-83 expansion, a proposed transfer to support upgrades to FNB Field, and lastly, we discussed a transfer needed to support the Broad Street Market fire loss restoration costs. I will note that during tonight's session, I will be requesting that the rules are suspended in order to discuss additional budget reallocation items that have been sent down since the November 1st work session. And I would ask my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The final report you will hear this evening will be shared by our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, on the work session of November 1st, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 1st of 2023, the Public Safety Committee met to discuss Resolution 76 of 2023. Resolution 76 of 2023 is a resolution approving, adopting, and placing into immediate effect the Dolphin County 2023 Emergency Operation Plan as the official emergency plan for the city of Harrisburg. This was a straightforward discussion with very little back and forth. We had Chief Brian enter line from our Harrisburg Fire Department give us an overhaul of the resolution. Chief stated that some years back, the mayor had drafted and signed a letter adopting the emergency plan, but this, uh, this would not make it a formal process. The resolution would make it a formal process. Title 35 is the overarching State Department that does not recognize the letter, so the resolution was needed in a way to solidify the plan. The emergency operations plan set forth the actions taken during times of emergencies here in the city of Harrisburg. Uh, the chief used Winter Storm Jonas as an example as to why such a plan is instrumental in the public safety realm. Um, I highly encourage my colleagues to support this resolution, and that would conclude the report for the Public Safety Committee from the work session of November 1st of 2023. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We have one ordinance for first reading this evening. That's Bill 8 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 8 of 2023. An ordinance amending Title 8 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Building and Housing Development Code to adopt amended permit fee schedules.
Thank you. Bill 8 of 2023 will move to the Public Safety Committee. We have one ordinance for amendment. That's Bill 7 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 7 of 2023. An ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to authorize the mayor and the city controller to provide joint-written designations for limited-purpose digital signatories to execute agreements and related documents on behalf of the City of Harrisburg when a sole signor is mandated.
Thank you very much. I'm not aware of any amendments, so we'll move forward to ordinances for final passage. We have Bill 7 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record one last time?
Certainly. Bill 7 of 2023. An ordinance amending the Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to authorize the mayor and the city controller to provide joint written designations for limited-purpose digital signatories to execute agreements and related documents on behalf of the City of Harrisburg when a sole digital signor is mandated.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill 7 of 2023? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, oh, excuse me. Okay. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill 7 of 2023 passes unanimously by a vote of seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 75 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 75 of 2023. A resolution approving the fifth proposed 2023 operations-related budget reallocation.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm not sure who will be making the presentation on behalf of the Administration. Mr. McCutcheon?
President Bowers, in the interest of time, could I just pass this handout to all council members?
Mr. Parker can share the handout.
Sure.
And you may begin. Thank you.
Okay, uh, very good. Uh, good evening, everyone. Brian McCutcheon, accounting manager here with the city. Uh, thank you very much for taking the time to review this Exhibit F, which is being, uh, presented for review this evening. I thank you because it, it, it contains some critical items relative to where we are in, in year end, and, uh, also want to thanks Neil and Emily and, and their staff for accommodating and getting this information in front of you. Um, and when you look at the first page, um, the footnote A in blue, this pertains to both the General Fund and Neighborhood Services, and it, it's all about the, the city's insurance renewal, uh, premium or premiums for its various coverages. In the interim, uh, from the work session and, and this evening, we finally did receive confirmation of what these finalized premiums would be. Uh, the footnote A at the bottom gives you a comparison um, with this, this particular line includes our property crime and cyber insurance coverages. Crime and cyber are essentially unchanged from the prior year, but you can see the huge increase in property insurance from approximately 146,000 last year up to 1.6 million for 2023. Extraordinary. Uh, and it, it all revolves around, uh, events occurring this year where the city did incur property damage, including this building. Uh, you may recall the water damage in the basement. Not the only event, but there were other significant events that, uh, contributed to this. We allocate, uh, these particular premiums uh, between the General Fund and the Neighborhood Services Fund based on total expenses, but, but the, uh, allocation is still quite large, and because it's extraordinary, we're viewing it as a reasonable justification of, of use of fund balance to accommodate this because it's, um, an expense the city can't do without, obviously, for property insurance. So the top part of the schedule includes the proposed amendments for the two funds, 1.18 million for the General Fund and Neighborhood Services, its share of approximately 261,000. President Bowers, Chair Green, do you want me to just keep moving through the footnotes? There's just two more, Footnotes B and C. Okay. Footnote B, uh, this pertains to the General Fund, and it involves looking at where we are this time of the year and, uh, with budget allocations, what, what the status is on available budget. And namely, there's two budget units, including the Office of Licensing, Taxation, and Support, and our Business Resources Development Line. Um, in, in preparing this schedule, I noted that our, uh, budget for these particular lines was running low, and the projection is not, uh, able to, uh, it's, it's more than what we have budgeted for, for the payroll expense lines, salaries and wages and, uh, FICA payroll tax expense. So in that review, uh, the, the adjustments are not, I don't want to say immaterial, but they are relatively small, but these will be able to, uh, affectuate the needed budget that is necessary to accommodate the final, uh, three to four payrolls of, of this year, November and December. And the way to do that is to take a look at a, uh, budget unit in the General Fund, which does have, because of the lack of, uh, filling positions in full, there is available budget savings. In, in this example, it's within the Vehicle Maintenance Center. So using, using caution and reasonableness, the idea here is to, to just simply reallocate that unused budget to, uh, make whole the, the payroll expense budgets for the two previous, uh, budget units I mentioned, Office of Taxation and, and Business Resource Development. That's footnote B. Footnote C, uh, is payroll-related as well, but again, in the interim from the work session and, and now, we received confirmation of a reclassification of two individuals, one, uh, in the, for the, for the bulk of this year, in, in Traffic and Engineering, the other in the Bureau of Codes, uh, becoming project managers, effective for the first, I'm sorry, for the second pay that's happening this month. So it'll be three pays that relate here. But to get that funding to where that needs to be, uh, they are moving, they're, they're moving as project managers to administer the, uh, the, the program initiatives that are being sourced or funded by the ARP funds. So they're both becoming project managers, and ideally, to keep them within the General Fund, the, it's to move their, uh, their roles over to the budget unit, which is Business Resources Development. So again, it's just simply taking, uh, the budget from where they were, which won't, won't be needed, and is not, uh, a detriment to those two funds, to bring it out of Traffic and Engineering and Codes, and to move it down into Business Resources Development to enable them to carry out the intended project manager functions. And that's, that, that covers the, uh, three footnotes.
Thank you. I'll defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, uh, to lead any questioning that council members may have.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any questions myself, so I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'm going to start to my far right with Councilman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no questions at this time, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, would you have any questions or comments concerning this budget reallocation?
Yeah, how many insurance vendors are we looking at?
Yeah, the, the, the city uses, uh, historically and, and currently, uh, Marsh as our insurance broker, and they work for the city as far as, uh, looking at our various coverages, which include these three I've, I've listed. Um, but we also have other, other, other coverages that are part of a casualty liability package, which includes auto, um, excess liability, general liability. Uh, we have also a policy for work, excess workers comp, picks, uh, insurance coverage. So there's, there's roughly, um, seven to eight or nine different policies, but they're with different, I, I can't name the, the insurance companies for each one, but again, our broker, Marsh, is the one. They're, they're the third party that, that works with the city.
And did they, um, do a search for lower rates? Did we have time to do that? How did this process work?
Yes, that was, there, there's sort of a typical annual process. We start in the summer with Marsh, who has to place our insurance. The, the difference here is after the fire at Broad Street Market, our, we had one main insurer, Liberty Mutual, who then issued a notice of cancellation because obviously, the claim is larger than all the premiums we ever paid them combined, so they canceled us. Uh, the, what we were able to get is a ladder of different insurers, seven of them, to make up the same coverage areas that Liberty was covering under one policy. I, I, Mr. Mr. Hartman can answer this better than I because he works with, um, our risk management people and, and Marsh, but, you know, we, we were at one point talking to Brit, and I don't know where it is, and, which is a Lloyds of London and Brit, the insurer of last resort in the world, to part, to do part of our coverage. I don't even know if they signed on in the end. So, you know, that negotiation, the last I looked, was still going on for part of the coverage. But, so we typically have multiple carriers. We just have a whole lot more now for different pieces of it come, this coming year.
Okay, so, um, I would like to have kind of the breakdown of, between last year and, the last policy and this policy. It's not essential for the decision, I think we have to buy it, but when I see increases like this, I don't think it's just one or two claims. I think we're not managing our properties in a way that reduce our liability, and, you know, insurance policies are concerned about that because I, as a matter of fact, just today, someone was complaining that the city was not aware of a particular car that is carrying city license plates. Um, so, you know, I, I think this is a bigger problem. I don't think it's one or two claims. I think it's, it's their assessment of our ability to reduce our liabilities. So that's just a comment, that's not really a question. And obviously, we have to protect ourselves and our, um, our taxes, our tax base. But I think we need better management of our property and assessments of our-
And it's also a reflection of the entire insurance market because there's these billion-dollar incidents now where they're, they're, they're just paying out the proceeds everywhere. Um, I mean, so we're, we're sort of in a perfect storm of the insurance market right now, and, uh, you know, that's what's going to happen.
I understand that, but if we're not doing our own due diligence, we're giving them the opportunity to exploit us as much as they possibly can.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So I'd rather us be diligent and thoughtful and thorough and continue and vet, and identify all of the potential areas that weren't, you know, like, I'm troubled by the fact that we don't know where we have certain property. Like, we should know that because that's how they're-
I'm unaware that's a property we're unaware of. So, if you're talk- I, I think I know exactly what you're talking about. I think I know exactly the person you're talking about. I think exactly the right to know you're talking about, and their conclusion is wrong.
Okay, okay. So, um, so anyways, um, we just need to be better managers of our property and managers of our liabilities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can, uh, produce, produce that schedule. We, we do every year when we budget because the, the, the policy periods on all of our coverage is run October through, first, through October 1st. We always plan on an increase for the last quarter, but certainly not to this level, so.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions or comments?
None for this, but I'll, I'll follow later on an issue just in terms of how we, um, do maintenance. I know we've been looking at all of our, upgrading all of our mainframes so that we can get much better, uh, oversight over all of the things that are happening in the city. So, um, we'll touch base later. Thank you. No questions.
Thank you. President Bowers?
Thank you. I have one question related to, um, the footnote C regarding the personnel reclassification. So you mentioned that, uh, an individual is moving from Traffic and Engineering to a project or a program manager, and then an individual is moving from Codes to become a program manager as well. Do we anticipate, uh, filling their former roles? Or how will this transition occur?
That one, I think I have to hand off. Tim, can you follow up, please?
The program manager role is being, um, it has been published for the new position, uh, and as well as the Codes position. So those will be filled hopefully before the end of the year, um, so that we can properly budget for the following year.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilman Lawson?
No questions, thank you.
And Councilwoman Rawls? I don't have any questions, thank you, Vice President, uh, Green. Thank you. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I don't, I don't have any questions personally. Uh, is there any, anyone else before I hand it back over to President Bowers? Seeing none, thank you again, and, um, thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution 75 of 2023. Are there any final questions, comments, or concerns?
Just, just for the record, it should be voted on as amended, and we provided you with the marked as amended resolution.
Okay, thank you. So, excuse me, that's Resolution 75 of 2023 as amended. Any final questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 75 of 2023 as amended has passed with seven yays and zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 76 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 76 of 2023. A resolution approving, adopting, and placing into immediate effect the Dauphin County 2023 Emergency Operations Plan as the official emergency operations plan for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 76 of 2023? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 76 passes unanimously with a vote of seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution 77 of 2023. Resolution 77 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 77 of 2023. A resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Thank you. Resolution 77 of 2023 will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution 78 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 78 of 2023. A resolution confirming the appointment of Ms. Tirsa J. Cameron Esquire to serve as the Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's collection matters.
Thank you. Resolution 78 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 79 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 79 of 2023. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service to the city's historical mainframe programming operations and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Thank you. Resolution 79 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution 80 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 80 of 2023. A resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Donald C. Steyer III Esquire to serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg for general matters.
Thank you. Resolution 80 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion?
Just a quick reminder to this, to law bureau to bring down the Affordable Housing Mandate Bill, the mandate for affordable housing bill.
I understand what you're asking for.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, new business. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, President Bowers. What's happening in Harrisburg this week, or this weekend, starting off Saturday, November 18th, join us for our annual holiday parade. The parade will begin on Front and Second Street at 10:00 a.m. This year's theme is Rocking Around the Burg. The parade will feature giant parade balloons, marching band, and dance team performances, decorated floats, characters, Santa Claus, of course, and more. After the parade, head to Strawberry Square to meet Santa and enjoy free hot chocolate and cookies while the supplies last. Also going on in Harrisburg this weekend, the Harrisburg Forum welcomes Harrisburg Sympathy Symphony, sorry, I could not get that out today, orchestra masterwork series, The Three-Cornered Hat. This colorful program, filled with humor and charm, will take place at 7:30 p.m., and tickets range from $16 to $93. Tickets can be purchased online at www-visithershiharrisburg.com, and I hope everyone has a rocking weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business, council members? Seeing and hearing none. The time is 7:11 p.m. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I adjourn, and I move that, and I hope I can go get a Slurpee at 7:11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.